I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice of our every
Roll call. Duncan Doe.
Here.
Bill Bolton.
Here.
Brian Nelson.
Here.
Chad Wilson.
Here.
Dave Allen.
Here.
Attorney Jeff Myers.
30 minutes from last week?
Wilson do it through.
Second.
Aight.
I'm going down those two. John Lee. John Lee? Yep. What are you doing there? What are you doing, John? What are you doing with this here? What are you subdividing? This here? You're subdividing these separate lots? So you're taking, you're subdividing this here, right? What all up in there is this full area? And then this, this area here, here, here?
Yep.
So how much is there, how much is there here on this? Is there, where is, what's the boundary on this?
Here, here, here.
Oh, it takes all of this in?
All of this.
Okay. Think of where any of these are in the map of this. Cause it's not... This, can you see this, Bill?
Yeah.
Go ahead and do what you guys can. Right? Right? Can you go up here, please? Okay, so you're... You're saying three? You're saying the map is showing three lots of these. Where are you, where's three? You saying?
That's a one parcel now?
We have one copy of a landmark. We'll try to look at that and see if it makes sense on the three yards.
Three, one. One, two, three. So is this a driveway? Yeah? I don't know what that is.
Jeff, what side is this land lot? But this isn't that. Not a real one. It's my everything. It's paid? I don't know. That's legal for...
Or usually required, or...
Usually, yeah.
Usually, I mean always. You may not have to use it, but it requires it. The trees is very...
This is right. Is that a driveway or a town road? Is that a driveway? All right.
It just goes up to? Driveway?
Yep. Goes all the way through to very good?
And then? One, two, three.
Separate somebody. Let's see that cloud, huh?
Yeah. This is probably true. And that's... Right? You got it?
Basically, yeah.
Okay. That's land lot? Which was land lot did you see, Jeff?
Lot three is not broken. Right, lot three. Which is on that driveway.
One, two, three. Three. Now, there's like a, a tree right here? Three.
One and two both about near state 22. And then three is?
Land lot and driveway.
Right. The only access would be across lot two or lot one, depending on...
Yep. That would have, there's gonna be an agreement on this.
That one going down to here. I'm keeping those buildings.
Right, these here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, this, this is the driveway, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so you maintain it on this one. Alright, so this, this lot here is gonna have to have a maintenance agreement. Lot three is gonna have to have a maintenance agreement for a... In other words, making, in other words, this lot has no road frontage.
It does. That is a private lot. It's a one year.
But this is a private driveway. Am I correct?
It's only one property. Who owns this? Is this also yours? Tiffany. Tiffany on that.
Well, anyway, this lot, what we're saying is that if right now this lot goes out on this private driveway, correct?
Yeah.
Well, we need, in order for you to sell that for subdivision, this lot, you need a maintenance agreement because say if you sell this property, this guy won't, say you're plowing here and taking care of it. If you sell this to Mr. Smith, and Mr. Smith says, "Well, I can't get my house out, who's gonna take care of this road?" We need an agreement if either this person has to take care of it or you have to take care of it. So there needs to be a road or a maintenance agreement on the road.
On the deed.
On the deed. Just say, "Maybe you're gonna go to Florida for a while there, this guy's living here, you're out like, oh, jeez, nobody's plowing my driveway."
Remember the else that's road for, on two. I don't know, who owns that? I'll look it up. Now, how does he get to this property on your driveway?
Oh, this is his road driveway. I mean, this is the only potential property in town. I mean, it's not a real problem if you come up with a maintenance agreement, either you're sold with this house or you keep it with this property. You need to have a lawyer or language and you can turn that into a counter to the proper language for the maintenance of that road. Pretty much all you have to do. You have, you got road frontage here, one, number two. Number two. And this one is a private, you can't, you may not, you said it's a private. And this is a road that comes in there, it's a private lot. He'll say, "Have a agreement on the deed." To maintain the road.
Is it 12 foot road?
Here. But outside of there, I don't see, anybody else see anything?
Just their access should be the only thing.
Should be the only thing. Jeff, you can call, or you can get a lawyer. He will contact your attorney to get the proper language. You just need some language, Jeff, to who's gonna maintain that road unless you have any else in place.
No, it's up to the board, they're gonna waive the road for an environment and then...
No.
Well, then that's, doesn't matter what the language says.
Oh, well, you're gonna waive, waive in the road for a while.
Kinda makes it useless, lot, you can't get to that. That piece down here. How wide is the road? The way this lot is, it needs road frontage. Doesn't have to actually use it.
It doesn't have to be, it can be.
What are you talking about? I don't know. I think we're safe.
Yeah. What are you saying, John, just figure out what you want?
The, your lot requires all lots have road frontage. Lot three is, it's currently drawn, does not have road frontage, right? So the easement is secondary to that one. If it has road frontage and doesn't use it, that's what you give it for the easement money, which makes sure there's durable access and that somebody is responsible for taking care of it. But there's still the requirement to rent. The board has the authority to waive it in special circumstances upon certain funding. And I don't know who owns, there's a, you know, a chunk of land in between, Grey Goose? Grey Goose.
Grey Goose.
Yeah. Grey Goose in the lot that doesn't appear to have clear title. I mean, the surveyor may be able to figure out who owns that or title abstracted, but lot three either needs road frontage somewhere or this board needs to waive that requirement. Alright? I would say let's find out who owns that old piece of property. Maybe you can buy it to buy it, whatever. And that would, that would take care of the problem. You gotta pre-survey the whole thing and get your access through the other lot.
What you wanna do is just sell that off, I assume? Are you gonna sell this, is that what you're intending to do, I assume?
Tiffany on that. My line is moved right to... Okay. I mean, this, this...
Alright, this is your lot, lot number three. Who owns this next to lot number three? This guy owns this over here?
Yes.
But right now this has no road frontage, that's the problem.
That has road frontage.
Where is the road, where is the road frontage?
This is all road.
Yeah, but there's another parcel here. Doesn't matter, this lot does not have any road frontage. This lot. Who's Tiffany? This guy. This guy owns this piece and this piece.
This guy owns this.
And this. I mean, you own this. But this has no road frontage. The road is over here. And that's not like a legal road, like a town road. And if you intend on selling this, that's what our attorney was also talking about. Somebody, you have to have access to this, we're not supposed to, we're legally obligated to subdivide a land lot piece of land. In other words, if this guy says, "I don't want you to go on my road," and this guy says, "You can't go here, who gives us this piece of property here?" See, that's where it's coming.
If these people that buy this house and down that road, they can own that road and that road comes through here. That, that's like, you'll be the right one.
Right, but what happens if this guy says, "I didn't want them to go on that..." If these people own it, say, "I don't want you to use the road." It's a private road. We can, we can approve this. This is no, no problem. One and two can be approved, but this cannot be approved.
Sure. Can't be what?
We can't approve it.
Yeah, because the upper part through the other, that's a right of way to begin with.
So, if you're gonna do the subdivision, the three lot subdivision, you gotta change something here. Something's gotta be done with this one here, it has to have road frontage somehow. Or maybe you could talk with this neighbor and he could, you could divide this piece with that, that's between you and your neighbor. Tiffany, you said plus Tiffany? Okay? So, when you get it straightened out, with this lot, you know, then you can back... Dean, Richard Dean?
Good evening.
Aye.
I gave you three maps here, they're just the enlargements of the person.
Does this is?
No. No, it's this.
Oh, alright.
This is the basic area. The second one is the wall of the two... I know I made copies, eight copies, so... Ah, here you go. Okay, so this one, the red area is the, the area that we're, we wanna do a property line change of. Okay, and then the next one actually shows that little area in the, the actual dimensions. Seven feet wide along the shore and 53 feet long, triangular in shape. It's basically to get my seawall on, on my property. And the neighbors agreed to it.
Today's deal, I have to straighten that out so we're just zigzagging it?
Yes. Things were done differently 70 years ago when my grandfather put the wall seawall in.
So you're gonna go from 150 first lot to 150?
Well, it'd be 100, I think it's 53. I have 53. And so that would make it 60 for me and I'm not, this says it's 150 for her. So we reduce it down to 143 for her. And my understanding is she actually owns some property on the other side that she's gonna incorporate in this also. When we get the survey, she's gonna make a change. But that's your...
Any questions, any other questions, Greg?
Nope.
We made a motion for this?
Do we have surveyors now for the actual transfer piece to 53 seven?
No, I've never done this before, so I was told I had to come here first to hit the okay and then my question is, do I get a surveyor? Do I vet him?
Do we require a surveyor?
Yes. We need a surveyor?
Yeah, we have a...
We need a surveyor first? Yeah, you can... Between the boundary line adjustment as it is, or, or your conditions with survey, correct? Yeah. It's a procedure of receipt of a survey now. With the final dimensions.
Right, yeah.
I'll make a motion then to approve the boundary line adjustment as shown here in preliminary joint pending a final draft from the surveyor. Seconded? All favor?
Aye.
Any names? Any extensions?
So, so I would then, on behalf of her, once I have this, and then we would come back here and...
Let's give some kind of...
Yep, okay. Very good. Thank you, have a nice year.
Ashley and Nate Hurley?
Well, it's me, they're not here. I'm here, okay? Yes.
Okay, I have a question.
Okay.
Is, is, uh, is there a town plate there?
It's a town road, yes.
Please, you understand?
Yep.
Yes, to the children?
My daughter, yeah.
Your daughter? Have you no problems, no problems, you're good?
Any problems?
Nothing quite a lot.
I couldn't tell.
Oh, this guy, somebody made you speeches out here.
Yeah, what exactly do you do, where is this? They got the map, this whole thing is, is the area that's getting...
This, this part, so this is my property. And we're gonna take out this three acres.
Oh, the dark line?
Yeah.
Oh, I see it, okay.
And there's a, down this backside, um, in my deed, there is a right of way and my right, the right of way says 16 feet, but the surveyor put 50, he allowed 50 feet there, I don't know if that's... No, it's rational behind your act, look. We can go by the 16 feet.
Which, where?
Down through here, there's this whole in the deed, it's a right of way. I have to go out back because there's property, there's somebody else and I have a 16 foot right of way that's there.
Oh, that would explain why you left a little strip there.
Yep.
I was wondering about that.
Okay. Make a motion to move it to public hearing for this month as...
Does it, does it have to be a public hearing, the chairman?
Oh, no, wait a minute, no. That's, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve it? Make a motion to the three for the final map, and we're good?
Okay, so my next step is to get a surveyor, the surveyor to actually come and do it and then I come back again.
Okay.
All favor? All favor?
Aye.
Any names? Any extensions?
Okay, thank you, just let me know when the survey's done, okay.
Yeah, three? Andrew on that name only?
Adaraqui.
Adaraqui, oh, lots of Adaraqui.
No, no. Uh, so I brought an extra map that I needed.
Okay, where do you go?
The subdivision, it's a two parcel. Honorable making lot one where the business is currently the 5.6 acre and sell off this second lot 6.3.
Okay. What, 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 what do you want to do? What did you say?
One and two. Retaining one, selling two.
Two is marked, that goes all the way around here?
The 6.23?
Yep, it's all the way around here?
Yep.
I'm keeping my... You got anything?
I don't think anything. Three, three, four, there's nothing there.
I have any more questions?
No.
Let's break forward.
Make a motion to move this to the public hearing for next month as...
Seconded? Yeah, we got the thing we're gonna do for the next one, it's on, Labor Day.
On Memorial Day. Except you're gonna enter the deed here, she's on there first, she's the wife. You make the motion, anybody seconded?
Seconded?
All favor?
Aye.
Any names? Any extensions? Okay, before we go on to the next one, what are we gonna do for another name? Memorial Day is on the fifth of May, you don't have a problem. Oh, okay, alright, yep.
So he's on.
Road for what?
Twenty-fourth. Yep, twenty-fourth.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
The rest of the lot is not here?
Oh, the last might even not.
It's not, it's always the fourth one, it's on the floor.
Yeah.
But then why is it on the?
Here.
Absolutely four.
Actually, it's, actually, it's not, like. That's a straight calendar, they got the skis in there double.
Yeah, that's why I said with more.
What more?
Christopher, come along, he's right here. Right away, come here.
Like I was saying, Bill, I'm gonna hand the reins over to you.
Oh, I'm sorry, are, we're, we're here.
There you go.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for the. The double culvert subdivision.
Seconded?
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Bell, do your thing, I don't wanna hear it all.
It's just, it's just a little lot, it's a subdivision, not subdivision. It's all, it's got a home front, ABA's approval. And I think Jeff and I seen last month, about the landlocked, the back part, the back part can't, can't be landlocked. The, uh, the lot next door to that. We have a right of way. Right through the middle rear driveway, into the back lot. That was a different story you gave me last week.
Oh, I did?
It is.
Well, that's funny, because my skin, my skin won't move, so it's almost in.
It's connecting somewhere else, not a right of way.
That's it. Well, we'll have to have Mr. Mail looking into it.
Yeah, you can just like.
I'll have the chair, or chair. We should have the two of them on the incident, really.
You're just gonna, you're gonna need stormwater, if you do that.
No. No, but that lot is, is not part of. This property, right? Which, oh. All we're looking at right now, lots one and two are the same little deed, that's all I'm looking at.
Yes.
Yes. That was.
That's all.
Just one thing.
Yeah. Any other questions? Make a motion to pause the public hearing?
Seconded?
All favor?
Aye.
Seeker.
Will the proposed action create material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation?
Yes.
Is that a large or a small?
Large.
Very small.
Very large.
Hearing small, I don't know where small at that big. Will the proposed action result in change in use or intensive use of land?
Yes.
Oh, yes, are you referring to small and petting neighbor?
Major.
Neighbor across the street, they're all neighbors.
Cause they can't go to the dashes over there.
Remember, you're on film.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, really.
Just saying.
A crack and go out.
So, what is the response?
Now, I can just go also plot.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in existing level of traffic, affecting existing infrastructure, mass transit, biking or walking?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy with now some incorporated reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies?
No.
Resource or treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of reports of restored archaeological, architectural, and aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in natural resources, metals, water bodies, groundwater, air quality for our farm?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Somebody wanna make a motion for, I'll make a motion for a major preparation?
Seconded?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, down to go?
We have previously refused.
Party here is letting.
Once it's gone.
It's time to get ready, be, be some longer on.
Oh. Is that the audience?
Anybody wanna make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision.
Seconded?
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? I just.